Good evening, thank you all for coming. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Then we'll have the pledge of allegiance and we'll approve the minutes. I'm just going to run through the agenda because we've made a little switcheroo. So we'll approve the minutes from last meeting and then we're going to have the superintendent recognize the winners of the word right challenge. So let's have the pledge of allegiance and then we'll go through.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Okay. Have you all had a chance to look at the minutes from the 20th of November 2019? Any changes, amendments? All good? Okay. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 20th, 2019, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thanks. Okay. Dr. Antonucci.
Yeah, so I'm actually going to turn it over to Mr. Donovan or Ms. Baines. Dr. Baines is here tonight. And we have several high school students who received a pretty high honor in the, as part of the word right challenge. And Dr. Baines will explain, they've been, we've had previous winners here before, but she'll explain what it is and we'll call the kids up and congratulate them. Thank you for coming, Dr. Baines.
Thank you for having me. So yes, I'm very proud of these students who, they scored at the top of their respective grade levels on a very difficult reading test. It really is an AP level reading test, the word right challenge. It is a national reading competition for students in grades nine to 12. Each test requires that students engage in close reading and analysis of fiction and nonfiction from classic and contemporary periods. High-scoring students may receive recognition nationally as well, of course, as at the school level. There are approximately 65,000 students nationwide who participate in this competition. These students, at their respective grade levels, scored approximately in about the top 50 out of about 15,000 to 20,000 at their grade level and also scored at the very top of their grade level here at Duxbury. So I will read those names and if those students could come up with our congratulations. Grade nine top-scoring students were Christian Biggins, Rachel Pratt, and Charlotte Tobin. Come on up, please, folks. Grade 10, Jordan Kenny, Lauren Tedesco, and Harrison Vose. Come on up. Grade 11, Michael Dickinson and Lilly Oliver. And grade 12, Ella McKenzie. So, great job, folks. Keep reading.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Great job, guys.
Get some swag.
We're using writing instruments.
I have to squeeze in a bit here, I think.
No, this is a reading competition.
Oh my gosh. You got it?
Yeah. Back up one.
Do you want us to?
Yeah, let me get it away. Sorry.
Smile.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Great job.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay. Great. Yeah, so, there, yes, if you, you don't feel, you shouldn't feel like you need to stay for the rest of the year.
Although it's awesome.
Yeah, it'll be the most entertaining evening you've had, but thank you very much for coming.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Yeah, so, there, yes, if you, you don't feel, you shouldn't feel like you need to stay for the rest of the year.
Although it's awesome.
Yeah, it'll be the most entertaining evening you've had, but thank you very much for coming.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Now, let me just see.
Yeah. It's okay. Get them anyway. It's good to, it's good to get them.
Okay. Great. So the next item on the agenda is public comment time. And I'd like to invite Matthew Compton to come up. Matthew sent us all a PowerPoint presentation, an analysis of some of the data crunching he's been doing related to the school district. And he and I met, what, a couple of weeks ago?
Yep.
To talk over his work and some of the data analysis that I had done last year, or 18 months ago. And I thought it would be useful to have him come and walk us through his presentation briefly and answer any questions that you had. He raises some interesting points and, or his presentation raises interesting points. And this is our budget, budget hearing, so it's kind of relevant to what we're talking about tonight. So I'll hand it over to you, Matthew.
Good. Thank you, Julia.
And Dr. Klingeman has it up here, so.
Okay, great. Dr. Antonucci, members of school committee, fellow Dexterian, thanks for having me here. Okay, my name is Matt Compton. I'm one of the, it sounds like many parents who have heeded Dr. Antonucci's call to get involved with the budgeting process, so that's why I'm here. I've got a fifth grader and a first grader. A little bit about me, I do corporate finance, so I do budgets for a living, so this is kind of, this is, I like this stuff. This is interesting to me. All right? So, yeah, you can go ahead and actually skip that one. So, about the data, so, so I attended a few of the presentations, budget presentations last year, is really where this all started. And I think we do a great job explaining our budgets, but I think one thing that we're kind of missing sometimes is we're looking at Duxbury only in a vacuum. All right? So, the thing I wanted to do, I was very curious about how we compare to other towns, how we match up against other towns. So, to do this a little scientifically, I chose six other towns that are around us, approximately the same median household income. So you can see this is sorted by our household income. Cohasset's at the top, 140,000. So, you know, same, approximately the same number of students, some more towns. So, and I wanted to compare how we do against our school system against these other towns. Next slide, please. So, the first most important, one of the most important slides, I think, and looking at the data, this is a little bit old, 2017. So as we all know, 80%, about 80% of the school budget is salary. And you see here, all these graphs, we're looking at the green line. So, yeah, so follow Duxbury. They're the same colors for each, each slide here. So, Duxbury has some of the, one of the lowest average teacher salaries of this peer group of these seven towns here. So, in theory, now, you know, it should make our, because this makes up such a large chunk of the budget, it should create less, I guess, make it easier to, relatively speaking, to make our budget, if that makes sense. So, doing the math here, comparing ourselves to situates, or our, our average salary is about 70, 80,000 compared to 87,000. So if you do the math, it's about one extra teacher. We can afford one extra teacher per million dollars than situate can. All right? So, our average, I think our salary is about $30 million in Duxbury. So in theory, we can afford 30 more teachers with that $30 million that situate can. Okay? So it's an important point. So we're going to skip through the next two, next couple of slides. I was wondering, why, why is it so low? And eventually figured out, actually, that this is the, the same data with the, with the Massachusetts ranking, okay? So, we are 112th out of 326 in the state, if you're looking at a state comparison. So we'll go to the next, I was wondering, why is it so low? Maybe other towns are hiring better teachers. That is in fact not true. Let's go to the next slide. We have some of the best teachers evaluated. And next slide, please. So I was thinking, maybe our teachers are younger, which in fact, so the way this is set up is the younger teachers on, on the bottom, we have some of the younger teachers compared to these other towns. So that is why our average salary is so low. And again, I think that's dialed in perfect. I think that's, creates an efficiency for the town. I think that's a good thing. Yeah, it's good. So, next slide, please. So then I wanted to dig into, let's compare ourselves against the other towns as far as, along with some other metrics here. So, next, the first was MCAS. And you can see, again, the green line, both in math and English Language Arts, this is for grades three through eight, we're middle of the pack again. Middle of the pack. You're going to hear, going to hear that a few times. But kind of middle of the pack in math, you look at Hingham, is, is really far superior to, to all these towns here. So MCAS, and then next slide. And also SATs, again, you see Hingham up top. We're a little bit better here in SATs, but, you know, you could argue also kind of middle, towards the top of our peer group. Sure. Another metrics we wanted to look at is class sizes. So if you see here, this is, this might be one of the more important slides that put together. And I understand some of this data might be, might depend on, you know, how the schools decide to report it. Some schools might report data differently. But however you slice it, this is, you know, directionally, even directionally, this is, we have a much higher average class size. All right? So this is, the way this is set up is better is up, worse is towards the bottom. So we have a much higher class size than, than our peer towns. And, next slide, please. And even in the state, when you compare us to the state, this is the same information as, but it's the state ranking. So out of 406 towns, we are ranked 350, is that nine?
359.
359. So bottom quarter of the state in class size. That's, that seems significant. Student-teacher ratio is another metric. So the reason this is different, I understand, is, you know, we could have, class size has nothing to do with teachers. It's just number of classes, students. This is student-teachers. Student-teacher ratio has to do with the teachers. And again, kind of middle of the pack here compared to our other peer towns. And if you go back, one, here's one thing I'm wondering about, is with our average salary so low compared to these towns, why isn't this, I would think we'd be one of the higher towns here, because we can afford more teachers for the same amount of money, right? So relatively speaking, I would think we would be towards the, the top of this graph. And another question is, why is situate so high with the average teacher salary? You'd figure they would be towards the bottom. This is same data, Massachusetts ranking. So again, we are, really the whole peer group here is pretty low compared to the state, but we are, again, in the bottom quarter of the state as far as student-teacher ratio goes. All right? Next slide, please. So, one thing, this was, this was, this was a request. I take requests. Mr. Quigley asked for per pupil spending. And I know we've used this metric in a lot of our presentations, per pupil, you know, how much are we spending? And I don't, I don't love the metric, and I don't know if people caught the email from Betsy Sullivan. She's of the same mind, doesn't, doesn't really like the, the metric for reasons of fixed costs and whatnot. But I'll take you to, real quickly, what I found on this. Next slide, next slide, please. So this is, this is an eye chart here, but let's, let's dissect this. So, the way this is organized is, we've got the top 80 median income households, towns, okay? So 1 through 40 is on the left, 41 through 80 is on the right, all right? It doesn't really matter which, what they are. But you can see, like Dover is up there, over 200,000 per medium, median household. Everything in pink there, shaded pink, spends more per pupil than we do. Okay? So even getting into, you know, the, on the right side of the chart, even a lot of those towns spend more than we do. But here's one thing that we found. If you look at the right-hand column, that's, I understand it's hard to see out here too, but it doesn't really correlate. So you'd think that the more affluent towns in the state would spend more per student, right? That makes sense. But it doesn't really correlate. And you can see it jumps all around that right-hand column. You know, it should, in theory, somewhat follow the median household, but does not. Jumps all over the place. So let's go to the next slide. And another way of, the per pupil data, this is, looking at it the other way, what are the top 25 per pupil spending schools or towns in the state? And the, these are, this is, you can see it's mostly seasonal, a lot of regional schools with, you know, commercial, high commercial tax base, with low student population. If you look at the student population, it's much lower than Duxbury is. So, that's one, so that's the reason I don't really like the per pupil. We can't really compare ourselves to these towns. So every time we're looking at, like, a state average per pupil spend, I think we're, it's apples and oranges. One thing that does correlate with the per pupil spend was our peer group. This is kind of interesting. That chart on the right is from the, for one of the first slides. So again, it's organized by, Cohasset's at the top, Duxbury's in the middle. And lo and behold, look at the per, per pupil spending, we are kind of where we generally are within our peer group. Okay, next slide, please. So conclusions, I think the one conclusion, you can, you know, look at the data a million different ways, Duxbury is not the best school in our peer group. That is certainly, you know, you heard me say middle of the pack a few times. So the question is, you know, is that what we want to be? Do we want to be in the middle of the pack? Should we be higher? Other points to, to take out of this, I think our average teacher salary should create efficiencies in our budgeting compared to other towns. I think our average class size is definitely too high. And then I think our average teacher, our student-teacher ratio, like I said, given the average teacher salary, should be higher, because we can afford, relatively speaking, more teachers. So, those are the conclusions I, I came to.
Great. Any questions? Any questions, or?
So by your definition of we're not the best in our peer group, you mean financially? How we spend our money?
I think just.
Or did you take into consideration, like?
I think like.
Where we send kids to college, what programs we have?
Yeah.
What classes we offer?
Yeah, there's a million, yeah, there's a million different metrics we can use. I think with the, just the metrics we're looking at here, class size, test scores, you know, we, it seems like we're kind of middle of the pack.
But it sounds as if that you saw a pretty clear correlation between median household income and per pupil spending? Is that?
Well, I didn't, I did not, but within our peer group there is.
Right.
Which is kind of interesting.
But, but the chart that had the 80 top?
Yeah, the 80, 80 top. I think it was, I don't, I think it's all over the place.
Right.
You'd think you'd be, you know, 1 through 40, and you'd be kind of close with the, with the per pupil spend, but it's, if you study it, it's, you know, it's all over the place.
Right.
Does not correlate.
Okay. Okay. That's interesting. Great. Any other observations? Well, thank you very much, first of all, for creating the presentation and all the analysis, because a huge amount of work went into that. But also, thank you for coming and just explaining and walking us through that.
Sure thing.
So, yeah, so we may come back to you.
Thanks for having me.
Great. Thanks very much, man. Are there any other public comments? I didn't see any names on the list.
There's your messages, though.
Okay. Dr. Antonucci, did you have any more?
I do not, actually.
Okay. So, Dr. Klingeman.
Just need a moment.
Okay, sorry.
I'm trying to turn my MCAS presentation on.
Okay.
Wait, we're in reports, still.
Yeah, we're just in reports. Do you want to save?
Oh, I don't have any comments for the initial reports. I'll save them for.
Great.
For presentations. Thank you.
Great. Mrs. Blake, do you have comments for us?
So, we were, just recently, John Adams, the Towns Finance Director, brought to our attention that we were going to, there was going to be an allocation made from the Lucy Hathaway Fund.
Right.
So, the Lucy Hathaway Trust Fund, the last distribution that was made was in 2016, and before that, it was in 2007 and 1999. And what that is, is there is a distribution from that fund, and the Duxbury Public Schools is allocated one-fourth of that distribution. So for this year, the distribution overall was $75,000. So the school was allocated $18,000 from that trust fund. And so, or right around the time that we were, that was brought to our attention, that we were going to receive the funding, we were also told that there was potential that we weren't going to receive funding for some of the art instructional materials that we had requested through our capital improvement plan. So we decided that we would take the allocation from the trust fund and put that towards the purchase of the art instructional materials. And then we also, with some of the remaining funds, are going to do some improvements to some of the instructional space at the Chandler Elementary School. So we're very grateful for the allocation of the trust fund, so that we can use that money in a way to better our schools and buy some materials that we weren't going to receive funding for.
Good news.
Yeah, it's great news, yeah.
Okay. Great.
Thank you, Lucy.
So, actually, this was, I thought was really interesting. From the Chandler School, they had their social emotional learning night on November 21st. So students were given the opportunity to teach their parents different skills that they had learned in the classroom, which just amazes me that a second grader can do that. But, and we actually talked about it in our, like, AP psychology classes, like, that's really an amazing thing that our school has implemented. And then Chandler will also be sending out their term one check-in documents before, I think their term closes at the end of January. So parents could be looking out for those. And then Chandler and Alden will be participating in their Hour of Code December 9th through the 13th. And then the middle school did a really awesome job of getting everyone in the holiday spirit. They did, their eighth grade did like a little mini turkey trot. The sixth and seventh graders had like a team breakfast with donations, I believe, by parents. And they're going to be running a food drive and also collecting gifts for the interfaith council for the holidays, which is awesome. And then the football, the high school team football, high school football team, made it to Gillette. So this Saturday, everyone's going to be heading up there. I think the captains and captains for the football team and cheerleaders went up today to have a breakfast there. But that's super exciting. Last time we did that was my freshman year, so it's a good way to end out the year. And our winter sports are started back up. And then the high school student council had our second balance day, which was appreciation day, and they did a really great job. We had students write out, like, letters of appreciation. So 270 letters of appreciation went out to people's classmates that they wanted to recognize. And it was just a really good way to make the environment more positive. And then last Wednesday, senior class, we had our senior breakfast, which was very fun. We all went out on the turf and took our 2020 picture with the drone, with the help of the tech department. So, good week.
Very good week. Great. I got a letter in the mail from my daughter. An appreciation letter. Someone in the teachers had them do. Yeah? Why am I getting a letter in the mail? I'm appreciated, apparently.
And just, congratulations on your, your news.
Thank you.
Which is your acceptance into.
Yes.
Your top choice college, right?
Yes.
University of New Haven, Presidential Scholar.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you very much.
Congrats. Now you can just coast the rest of the year. Shut it down.
Not yet.
It'll be so easy. It's a message from.
Hey, I know how it works, yeah? I've been there.
I don't make it, girl, ever.
Yeah, I'm kidding.
Great. Well, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Just a couple of items from me. On the 22nd of November, Dawn and I met with the two chairman of the IT Steering Committee. They're going to come and present to us next, in our next meeting, around recommendations for, from the consulting group around town, school, IT operations. So we will hear from them, but we had a very productive meeting, and so there's, there are some budgetary issues that arise out of this, the recommendations from the consulting group. But anyway, that will come up in our December 18th meeting. And then on Monday, December the 16th, I think we've all gotten an email, we're going to have a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee. And I believe that the main topic of conversation is going to be the progress in the municipal budget and kind of evaluating the primary budgets, proposals from the departments, as well as the secondary ones and where we stand in terms of whether we go with the revenue forecast for the town that's in place, or whether the town decides to put Proposition Two and a Half Operating override on the, an article for that on the town meeting warrant. So that will be on the December the 16th. And I think that's everything from me.
Great.
So, Dr. Klingeman.
All right, MCAS time. I would love to invite up my colleagues who will be assisting with our report tonight. So if you all want to come join the table and when it's your turn to speak, if we could make sure we share the microphones, that would be great. And so we have a couple of handouts we'd like to send around. This first handout was in your school committee folder, but I don't believe it was included in the copies for tonight, so I wanted to make sure you had that document as a reference point.
That's what you said, yeah.
And then there's also a copy of the presentation that will be showing up on the screen, in case anyone in the audience isn't able to see some of the smaller numbers.
Great.
This is yours.
They might want to, they might want a copy of that for their reference, too, because I made that special for the school committee. And they've been working off the presentation. And I'd like to thank my assistant, Elizabeth Burns, for putting together this nice presentation. So hopefully, the information we're presenting this evening is helpful, because there's so much data that we have access to as a school district in terms of our student MCAS performance. So we've been working with this data since August, when the preliminary results were available to us. So now it's, we're, we're at December. So this is information that we've been working with for a few months now. So I'll begin tonight's MCAS presentation with highlights of our district accountability data. And as I present this information, please keep in mind that this is a bird's eye view of our district MCAS results, and you will hear more content-specific information from each of the schools. So in your folder for tonight's meeting, you will find an overview of our student results by grade level, and that's in the packet, and the breakdown of the achievement level results. That's page two of your packet. Also, on page three through five of your packet, I included accountability information for your review that explains how districts and schools are classified into two categories, districts and schools requiring assistance and districts and schools not requiring assistance. And this is determined by four different criteria. One is progress towards our improvement targets. The second is criterion reference target percentage, and this was weighted more heavily this year than last year. Last year, this was 40% of our rating, and this year it was rated at a higher level at 60%. Also cumulative criterion reference target percentage and our accountability percentile. So that's how they determine the school accountability levels. So, advance over to... So as you can see on this slide, I realize that scale on the right is very tiny, so that's also included in your packet. But none of the schools in our district is requiring assistance, which is great news. So as a district, we're not requiring assistance, and we are making substantial progress towards our growth targets. Alden is also not requiring assistance, and they're meeting or exceeding their targets. DMS is not requiring assistance, and they've made moderate progress toward their targets. And Duxbury High School is not requiring assistance or intervention. And they received a school of recognition for the high growth in MCAS that they received over the past year. So we're very proud of our high school students, but we're proud of all of our students, because there's, these are challenging assessments and the target is always changing. So on the right, you'll see the scale of how the schools are performing from right to left. So the left is the school of recognition, and all the way to the right, the lower 15% of schools identified by the state would be those schools requiring assistance. So when we look at our overall district data, you will see that our students are separated into subgroups by district, school, and grade level. And you must have a minimum of 30 students to be, to have a subgroup, so we do not have subgroups in all of the categories that other districts may have. The subgroups include all students, which is exactly what it says, all students. Our high-needs subgroup is made up of economically disadvantaged English learners, former English learners, and students, students with disabilities. And then we also have other categories, economically disadvantaged. And we also have lowest-performing students subgroup, which is a group that we need to identify using different sets of calculations that are determined by the state. So, those are groups that we work with after looking at our aggregate giant M-CAS file that is sent us with every single student in the district score. Okay, so our overall district highlights for English Language Arts. So, all students, we met or exceeded our targets for all students non-high school, so that's grades three through eight. For all students high school, for our lowest performing students non-high school, and for our lowest performing students high school. So, we are pleased with our overall bird's eye district ELA accountability results. Also, looking at our district accountability results in math, we exceeded our target for all students at the high school level and for the lowest performing student group at the high school level. We received a rating of no change from prior year in math for the all students subgroup for non-high school grades. And we improved, but were below target for our lowest performing students that are non-high school. Again, that's in math and grades three through eight. When you see the individual school presentations, Alden and DMS fall in that district category of non-high school, and so they do have separate targets. They're not put in that same group except for the district data. And in science, we exceeded our target for all students at the high school science level, and we had a decline of more than .05 for all students non-high school, and that was due to our middle school science scores, not Alden, which you'll hear a little bit more about as we go forward in the presentation. Accountability-wise, we are also looking at our district growth. And the state also sets targets for growth. Typically, we would like to see student growth percentiles upwards of 40%. And so, that's what we're, we don't want, we'd like to see them much higher, but 40% is the minimum we'd like to see. So, for ELA, we met or exceeded growth targets for all student group, non-high school grades, the lowest performing group, non-high school grades, all students at the high school, and lowest performing group, non-high school. So, those were our ELA growth targets, which were very strong. In the math area, we exceeded our target for all students at the high school and for our lowest performing student groups, at the group at the high school. And then we were improved but below target for our all students group, non-high school, and our lowest performing group, non-high school. So, also, before I turn it over to the individual schools, as a district, we always have a strong focus on closing our achievement gap of our students with disabilities who are in our high needs subgroup. So, there's some groups that are counted multiple times. So, our students with disabilities group is counted within our all students group, our high needs group, and separately as a students with disabilities group. So, additional steps we are taking to close this gap with our students with learning disabilities group is that the special ed department is doing some specific activities, such as an analysis of the aggregate student data. The sped department identified students with disabilities with scores that were not meeting expectation, expectations or partially meeting expectations and low growth. And for those identified students, the special ed department is reviewing IEPs and looking at the impact of the disability on student performance. Goal areas related to the item error analysis of the individual students are being addressed. So, they're taking the M-CAS data and they're looking at it as, they're looking, doing a complete data analysis to see if some goal areas need to be identified on student IEPs. The special ed department will also review the student's current level of performance within the curriculum frameworks and will identify any additional needed supports for the students identified. So, we certainly don't just do a big look at the data. We also look at individually at the student level, specifically for the students in our subgroups. So, I think I get to turn this over to Mrs. Benoit from Alden School.
Hi.
Hi.
So, I'll go over the Alden information with you, both the accountability information and the achievement information. That's on the next three or four slides. So, there's a lot more on the slides than I'm going to go over with you because we wanna keep it brief and keep it moving. This first slide is the accountability percentile breakdown more specifically for Alden School. So, what you're looking at is the accountability for each subject area and then the growth percents for each subject area. And finally, in the last column, our overall accountability percentile. So, that's the percentile given to us against other schools that are similar to ours in terms of accountability categories, the grades they serve and so forth. So, overall, the great news is our overall accountability is 91%. So, you know, greater than 90% of schools similar to us, that's our percentile. So, we're very happy with that. Our cumulative progress toward making the improvement targets that are set for us by the state is 85%. That's also a cumulative score, takes into account this year's improvement toward targets and last year's, it has to have at least two years' data to calculate that. So, overall, it's a, it's a great picture. Some other takeaways on this slide for me, you know, we were talking about the, the students with disabilities population, and if you look across the bottom row of the chart, you see those scores in particular are, are great in terms of how are they, how are those, how's that category measuring up against the accountability targets that the state has set for them? So, that's great. And then the science was interesting for us because those scores are relatively high as well. And last year was a first year in the new science program at Alden School, so sometimes with a first year implementation, you don't know whether you're gonna see a dip or a rise or, so that's something worth watching over the next couple of years, but we're pleased overall with, with this information. On the next slide, you're looking at the Alden School breakdown for English Language Arts in terms of the last three years' performance in each account, in each category of proficiency. Below each of the graphs, I sort of highlighted some, some notes. It should be noted here that all of this analysis is basically just the first blush look from really the administrative team, the leadership team's lens. Teachers are still working on analysis going forward. Over the next couple of months, they're going to do deep analysis at the classroom level, at the team level, at the grade level. So, you know, that, take, take this with a grain of salt, of course, and if you have any questions, let me know. This was our first year in ELA implementation last year of the Lucy Cawkins Units of Study and Reading, and one of my biggest takeaways was that I was pleased to see the correlation between the standards that the students performed particularly well on are also the standards that are a large focus in that, in that curriculum. So, I'm pleased to see that I, I think it's already having a positive effect on kids' ability to do things like analyze character and motivation and things like that, do some of the deeper level inference, which were areas in the past that we, you know, were looking at, what can we do to increase their abilities there? The greatest focus for us going forward is writing. We definitely notice a pattern in the scores on our writing pieces when the students write their essays. There's a lot of room for us for additional points, both in topic development and in conventions, and I think if we can make some gains there, we will begin to see some great shifts up into those, you know, exceeding and meeting categories off of the partially meeting. We'd really like to get there, and I think that our work, looking at writing and looking to make a few changes, might really help in that respect. And if we go to the next slide and take a look at math, you know, when you look at a three-year look, you start to begin to see that, you know, while some years are a little higher in some areas and a little lower in others and across grade levels, you start to see cohort trends, you start to see that, you know, overall, I would say this is a fairly static picture, you know, with ups and downs throughout. We would like to see it become less static and again, get more energy at the upper levels of exceeding and meeting. Patterns that I noticed across all three grades were geometry, which has already been an area of focus for us. We did summer work this summer to place geometry throughout the units going through the year, so kids aren't getting geometry right before M-CAS and kind of crunching it in. So, that's one change that we think is going to have a positive impact, and we need to look at fractions. The state asks questions with fractions, you, you can't even begin to wrap your head around the way they want students to work with fractions. It's, it's pretty high-level thinking in terms of what they're doing with them and using all different kinds of models. So, we definitely wanna look at what can we add to in our math instruction that will help kids be more ready for these sorts of deep-level thinking around fractions. There were some great areas of strength, operations, numbers in operation, numbers in base 10 were areas of strength for us as well. And then finally, science. This was the first year that science was taken online, the next gen, across the state for everybody, so we really don't have a great way to compare this year's data to past years. But I am encouraged with the science data, given that, as I said before, science, we rolled out a new program last year, so we have lots of room there to continue to tweak across our next few years of implementation there. One thing I noticed, the technology and engineering standards, we did pretty well in those standards, and those are standards that we've been watching over the years. I'm, I'd like to think there's a correlation between that and the Museum of Science STEM kits that we use and the Makerspace use. I think kids are becoming more and more able to, to speak about engineering and design through that whole engineering design process and look at the process as a whole and identify areas where a plan could be improved or better materials could be used. So, I think we're making some, some gains there, which is nice. We need to focus a little bit on energy waves and the transfer of energy for information systems. Yes.
Great. Any questions for Alden's data before we move on to the middle school?
As far as kind of remarkable changes from last year, what would be your kind of top two?
From last year remarkable changes? I would say, I think that the math performance in grade three is something that surprised me a little bit. We, we had a, what I consider a decent dip in performance there. So, we have our eye on which standards were tripping kids up, which kinds of questions were they having trouble answering? We always have that little question in third grade about how much of this is about taking the test online versus paper and pencil, but, you know, kids are taking it online across the state, right? And so, we wanna be, we wanna be in the top performing sector of the state. So, we definitely are looking at that. And I think the fourth grade performance in math alternatively and also in ELA, there are some significant strengths going on there. In particular, I think, fourth grade's writing stood out, as I talk about writing as an area for growth, but in fourth grade, their writing was actually quite good last year, speaking relatively against our third and fifth grade. So, I think we have some, you know, we already have talked about doing some sharing out of, you know, what does writing look like in fourth grade versus third and fifth? Is there anything to be gained there from the vertical conversations and whatnot? But as I said before, I really feel like when you look at the year-to-year changes, there's, there's not been a lot of significant change to say, oh, you know, one way or another. We've had so much curriculum shift and standard shift over the last several years that it's really, when you start to look at it, it's, it's hard to know what are we looking at? Are we looking at the changes in the percentages from the state? Are we, what is really driving the changes we perceive?
Sure.
You know, so I, I guess those would be my biggest.
Okay. And, and is it also the, the shift to computer-based rather than paper-based testing? Is that still confounding the kind of trend analysis? Or has that pretty much worked its way through?
I would say only in the sense that last year, the third graders did not have laptop use before they, they came. So, they truly were new to the whole idea of working on a laptop. That's gonna be different this year.
Right.
Because, well, starting this year, second, second grade is using laptops, so next year's third graders
Right.
will have greater experience coming in.
Okay.
It certainly, I feel like, has an impact. When you watch the third graders take the test, the amount of output that they're, that they're giving on, say, a written passage, a composition, an essay, it's smaller than what you might imagine getting from them handwritten. So, you know, it's something we're still work with, it gets better every year. They, I mean, they amaze me what they do, but it's, you know, it's certainly a consideration.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
And then, I assume both of you from the partially meeting are fully know what we're not meeting, like what's driving the partially meeting versus the...
Yeah, we do a thorough item analysis in every grade level and every content area. But again, we're just giving you the overview of what the biggest trends were as a school and as a district.
But I feel like, you know, like, we've said, we're always sort of middle of the pack. So, have we kind of figured out what it is we need to? I mean, Lucy Cawkins is great, but if you look at sixth grade, well, the fifth grade, you know, it was great for fourth grade, their scores went up. More of them are meeting or exceeding, but, so there's not one thing that jumps out.
Not really.
Okay.
And they only release some of the test questions? So, we're usually, year to year, we can look at half the test questions to see if we can establish what might have been confusing about particular wording, but again, you don't get all of that data year to year, so it's a little bit frustrating if you see that we had difficulty on a couple of test questions and we can't see
Right.
what the test questions are. So, we just hope that with our curriculum changes and the work that we're doing, that eventually we'll see the, the student results improve.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Benoit. So, now we have the DMS slide, which looks similar to that original Alden slide, which, again, you'll see the breakdown of how we did as a middle school when compared to other schools of similar size, grade span, and socioeconomic status. And what jumps out at us from this overall look at the middle school is our low growth in math for the all students group and our low growth in ELA and science for our high needs students. Just remember, the high needs student subgroup includes students with disabilities and economically disadvantaged students. They're actually counted several times in the data, so they're in our all students group and then they're in their own subgroups. So, we would certainly like, as I had mentioned earlier, we look to see growth upwards of 40%. Certainly, we love to see growth upwards of 60%. So, when we're looking at growth in math at the 8% level at the middle school, that's a huge concern to us. Overall, our high needs group came out with a 42% increase, but it's definitely lower in the math area than we'd like to see. Also, with our economically disadvantaged group, growth in math is a concern, and our students with disabilities subgroup in math is a concern. So, those, we've been working for the past two years, Mr. Jocelyn will speak a little bit about some of the program of studies changes that we've recommended, and I think it's probably gonna take a couple of years of the new program, the way the students progress in math, to be able to see some results, but this is certainly something we're taking very seriously. Overall, when compared to other middle schools, the growth for all students was 67%. And so, I think across the state, we've seen a trend that middle schools in general are seeing lower growth scores. This is really challenging test, and so this isn't unusual. However, we definitely have much room for improvement here. Overall progress towards our improvement targets set by the state for DMS was at the 44% level, so that's at the lower end of where we would like to see it. So, next, we'll have each of our curriculum supervisors talk about their area. So, Dr. Baines will start with the ELA for DMS.
So, our students gave a strong performance overall, reflecting a lot of work done by the, by the students themselves as well as by the English teachers who have worked hard to revise instruction and assessment to align more closely with the 2017 curriculum frameworks. Some takeaways from our analyses of these tests and the results. At sixth grade, we saw continued growth in the number of students exceeding expectations. In 2017, only 4% of our students fell into that category. In 2018, it was 26%, and then in 2019, it was 31% exceeded expectations. Students performed exceptionally well in the areas of writing and in comparative analyses of multiple passages. And we feel that students benefit greatly from the focused instruction that they get in grammar and in vocabulary in their writing classes and from text analysis in their reading classes. In the seventh grade, we similarly saw a significant increase in the number of students exceeding expectations, 6% doing so in 2017, 10% in 2018, 13% in 2019. Students demonstrated many strengths, including in writing, vocabulary, and context, and the physical attributes of a text, which is the focus of their critical reading classes. Eighth grade was a slightly different story. In 2017, 5% of our students exceeded expectations. 2018, it was 13%. And then in 2019, we saw a slight drop to 10% of our students fell into that category, which was not only a drop from the previous year, it also put us slightly below state average, which I have not seen before. And so, that, that was quite, quite notable. Writing seemed to present a challenge for these students, especially the comparative and narrative writing tasks. and narrative writing tasks that are fairly new to us all with this new test and the new frameworks. Interestingly, it was our non-special education students who scored at or below average relative to their cohort on aspects of writing. Our special education students, on the other hand, consistently scored above state average relative to their cohort in all aspects of writing. So, we're very proud of them for their performance. I'm looking into, you know, what happened at eighth grade here with our writing scores. I have, you know, some ideas. We're going to continue to work on ways to improve student performance at eighth grade on the upcoming MCAS. You know, generally, we did, we did well overall, but there's certainly room for improvement and certainly with regard to writing, you know, at, at eighth grade, whether that's, you know, instructional changes we need to make, whether it's some of our assessments, but that's an ongoing, that's going to be a, a working progress and something we, you know, pay close attention to. Generally, our analyses of the tests indicate that we need to focus on characterization, understanding vocabulary in context and helping students to differentiate between facts and unproven claims. I could say something here about some of the population at large needing instruction in differentiating between those two things, but I will not. We also need to continue to find ways to complement texts with supplementary materials. We have plenty of resources. We've got Newsella, which is fantastic in that regard. Commonlit.org is, is also great. And we really need to find ways to provide interventions for struggling students because as well as we are doing overall, there are students who still struggle and we're, we're looking for ways, hopefully that the new schedule will provide us with opportunities to be able to do that. But there are, you know, there are students who need very, they need some help and we need to, you know, have opportunities to give them that help. So, that's it for me for...
Just one question. So, just getting back to that last slide, is the, is the narrative, the first bullet on rights, that inconsistent with what you just said?
I think that that might've gotten copied differently, that column there. So, because I think what Dr. Baines said was that, that was slight change from 2000, the first bullet under grade eight.
Continued growth in the number of students exceeding expectations is inconsistent.
Except it was a slight decline. That was supposed to be a slight change. So, the column might've been...
Sorry.
Sorry about that. I can send you a revised bullets that Dr. Baines provided.
I'm not the grammar police, just in case someone gets online and says, oh, there's continued...
We'll make sure this one's not posted. We will correct that.
Yes, the sixth grade.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Jocelyn, if you could discuss the DMS math?
Yeah, no, no guarantees on grammar perfection.
Math guy.
So, just jumping right into sixth grade, sixth grade math was, you know, out of the three grades in middle school, the best one, I think, you know, they scored 76% were either meeting expectations or exceeding expectations. And, and to me, that's a good thing because when we talk about some of the program of studies changes that Mrs. Klingham referred to, sixth grade is a grade that's not really affected with the program of studies changes that we've implemented this year. So, that they were doing pretty well, I think is a good sign. They went up 11.1% in those categories that I just stated, the meeting exceeding expectations from last year. And again, they're different cohorts, but I do a lot of my comparisons from the year before. Just a full disclaimer, the state average also went up for sixth graders. We just think it was probably a little bit easier of a test for them last year. But the state average only went up 4%, so we, you know, more than doubled that with the 11.1%. So, it was pretty good. I'm looking at the number of questions. It's a 40-question test for math, sixth grade, six, seven, eight and 10. So, there were three questions that we were below state average on versus six from the year before. So, that was a positive thing as well. And then kind of my job is to look at those questions and figure out there's certain, you know, gaps in the curriculum. So, equivalent expressions was kind of the theme for those three questions, which is a large domain. There's more than just a few questions on there, but still, that's going to be their goal for the teachers to kind of stress that, you know, throughout this year. Grade seven was also a little bit, you know, not quite 11.1%, but the, I kind of really wanted to look at the honors and the non-honors courses there because we do segregate our students by those two levels. So, the honors group went up 6.8% in the either meeting or exceeding expectations category, but the non-honors also went up 7.2%, which is pretty good. A lot of our focus based on the 2018 MCAS scores were for some of our lowest need students. And obviously, we still have a lot of work to do in that, but at least that kind of showed me that, you know, the teachers were certainly, you know, putting that as a priority item and they, you know, for the most part, did okay in grade seven. Again, there you go. But the slide will show that there, then one of the notes on there, in 2018, there were 13 questions in grade seven that were below state level. This past year, there was only three. There were certainly a lot of questions that we were, you know, close. I think in comparison to grade six, they, they seem to knock a lot of those ones out of the park, but still going from 13 to three is a pretty big jump. So, I do credit the teachers for that. And then again, in the trend with those questions that were either below or even close to below, a lot of those questions were real-world problem-solving questions, which again, the MCAS has a lot of those questions. It's not like every question that the kids saw was below average. But in terms of finding a theme for the teachers to kind of rally around and create a student learning goal around, we took some real-world problems that were either directly from the MCAS or previous MCAS tests and they're kind of using that as a baseline. And then again, they'll measure at the end of the year to make sure that kids are improving in those specific standards. So, you know, they're all on board with that. I did ask all the teachers, grade six, seven and eight to kind of, you know, a lot of times, they pick a couple of classes to do those, you know, student learning goals with. But I really wanted them to focus on some of the lower performing kids, which I think a lot of the teachers in the past have done those with the honors kids. But just trying to be more equitable and making sure that the needs of some of the lower-level learners are met, they've kind of taken that. And so, I'm hoping we can have some big strides in all middle school grades in those, for those kids. Okay, moving on to grade eight, right? This was probably the most concerning grade. And I think when you looked at the first slide that Danielle kind of spoke to, I think a lot of that is predicated, a lot of those scores were, you know, coming from grade eight. So, grade eight, the biggest takeaway is the area of geometry. And I literally remember standing up or sitting here last year doing the exact same conversation. And I think that speaks the need, or speaks to the need for the program of studies change because again, these kids that we're talking about that took this last year did not get this program of studies change, which the current kids do have. So, you know, for a test, which was already 15% more geometry questions than the year before, for these kids that learned their eighth-grade geometry standards in grade seven as part of that, I don't know if you guys remember, but there was like a, you know, mandatory geometry class. That's where they got their grade-eight geometry standards. And we kind of knew that this was going to happen, so we had worked with grade-eight teachers to just kind of say, look, we looked at the 2018 data, you're going to need to get some geometry refreshers in there before the MCAS. And, you know, I think they did the best they could, but it was certainly new for them to teach as well. So, I think there's going to be a lot of growth in there coming forward. We also have two new teachers for grade eight. They each only have one section, but one of those teachers was the grade-seven geometry teacher last year and another one's a high school geometry teacher. And they all coordinate and they're all pretty, you know, collaborative people. I do think that they'll build a pretty robust geometry curriculum within the framework of Algebra I, which is their current grade-eight course. So, I, I do think there's a lot of good things that are happening in our school that we'll kind of, you know, we'll see some of the results of that next year. I do believe that. Because I think if you take away those geometry questions that were below state level average, now we're talking we are three questions below state level and it's certainly more in line with the other two grades, which did pretty well. So, that's kind of the big stuff. Again, I, you know, my big takeaway is certainly the geometry with eighth grade, but we have plans in the works that should remedy, remedy a lot of that, so.
Great. Okay. Good. Thank you very much.
On to DMS science, Mrs. Harmon.
So, you can see that I have one graph. Therein lies the problem is that it's a three-year test and this was as Mrs. Benoit spoke to for the Alden School. It's the first year of the computer-based new standards MCAS 2.0 test. And the DESE gave us an achievement goal for that, which as a data person seems not reasonable because this was the baseline score. So, this, you know, we're looking at this very closely to see where we can make improvements, but this is really where we're getting our, our good data. So, one of the reasons that our scores were not quite as high as we would have liked has to do with two things. Number one, we also adopted new curriculum this year. It was, it was a lot of, it was a lot for the teachers to completely flip from old curriculum to new curriculum as well as many of them shifted what content they were teaching. So, we had done sort of a, before the shift, we had done sixth grade was somewhat interdisciplinary, seventh grade was life science and then eighth grade was mostly physical science. And now, we have some of each component in every year. So, it's, it follows with best research in terms of spiraling curriculum and giving students experience in all of those disciplines. So, hopefully by the eighth grade and they've had three years of science that they have to really put together and, and do well on that one test. Hopefully, this spiraling will help students do that. We have looked, started looking carefully at the questions that we did poorly on. Also, energy as the Alden School seemed to have some problems with those questions. And for us, forces as well. And that was because of the curriculum shift, it was hit very lightly for the kids in eighth grade. So, that should be helped by having the curriculum in place, grade six through eight. I will say that our five highest scores, our five highest questions that had the best scores were between 18 and 20% higher than the state averages for those questions. Four of them were technology or tech ed questions. So, I want to be, say how thankful I am that we have an eighth-grade tech ed class because that really gives students a solid background for tech ed. And the other, and the fifth question was on a topic they had recently covered in eighth grade. So, we need to really work on, again, trying to spiral this curriculum and make sure that students are, are growing in all of the topics of science. The other thing I wanted to say about that is we, as the eighth-grade teachers have been looking closely at ways to help prepare them and review, although we don't want to spend, you know, we're not going to spend all of eighth grade reviewing sixth and seventh material, but trying to figure out ways that are really meaningful for students in those last couple of weeks before MCAS to make sure that they feel prepared.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. All right. And finally, a school with a little ribbon on it. Our high school was recognized as a school of recognition for its high growth. So, we wanted to make sure we added that. Overall, there were really no areas that jumped out. As far as the data analysis and the subgroup data analysis, we were pleased with the growth everywhere we looked. So, overall, it was 99th percentile compared to other high schools of similar makeup. And overall, towards our own improvement targets set forth by the state, we were at 87% meeting or exceeding our targets. So, at the high school level, we have our ELA grade 10 test. So, Dr. Baines is going to share some information about that.
Yes, and I think this slide is also the sixth-grade information copied and pasted mistakenly, but...
How did that happen?
I'm not too sure, but we can correct that and maybe send that out.
We can share that. Do you have your points?
I do, yes. Came prepared. So, this was the first of a year of MCAS 2.0 for our 10th graders as the graduation requirement is a very, very different test from the, what they call the first-generation MCAS, which was very one-dimensional, very, very linear. This, the new test requires very different skills, creative writing skills, as well as the ability to synthesize ideas from multiple texts into, you know, one interpretation. A lot of very sort of creative, technology-based questions as well, where, where the students are required to, you know, drag and move around pieces of information. And, but, but we, we were ready because our students, they did, they did a great job, very strong, very strong performance. It was a lot of work on the part of the teachers to prepare them for, for this kind of work and the students as well. I mean, obviously, there's no previous version of the test to compare our results with, but we're proud that more than a quarter of our students, 27%, scored in the exceeded expectations category, which was a little bit more than twice the state average percentage of students scoring in that category. Generally, students excelled in, in their writing tasks as well as in identification of literary techniques. What is interesting is that, you know, all of our students performed very well. Our special ed students in particular were, for the most part, in, in terms of their scores, above state average in the 20 percentage points above state average for the special ed students did very, very well, whereas the non-special ed students, you know, compared to their cohort were, you know, tended to be sort of eight, nine, 10 percentage points above state average for their cohort. So, there's a lot of great work being done by the special education department there to support students in English. And just as at the middle school, we need to continue to find ways to engage students in comparative study of texts. And also at the middle school, we, we need to find ways to provide interventions for students who are struggling because as well as we are doing overall, we do have students who struggle with reading and writing. And as, you know, we can and we do within the classroom setting, provide the interventions that, that we can, but there are some students who would benefit from additional supports. And we're hoping, as I said, that the new schedule will allow us to find ways to, to give students those supports.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. DHS math?
In looking at this data, I would echo some of the things that Karen just said about, you know, the special ed department and being able to support students because we had similar results. I think that third bullet point kind of speaks to that. When you compare the, like a, you know, the composite score for SWD stands for students with disabilities and high-need students, again, from the 2018 MCAS test, those were really high priority items for us last year. So, I do credit the teachers and the special ed staff to make sure that those scores were high. And I mean, those are incredible scores. When you compare it to just overall kids, the growth, I mean, they're all in the 60s, they're all really, really good, but to have those two subgroups outperform, you know, all the students averaged out is pretty incredible. So, that was great. The four out of four points for student growth in all students, or yeah, for all students, that kind of just speaks to the parameters that the state sets for you. And if, again, if you kick up, you can get four out of four if you exceed the targeted areas and they certainly did for all students and they obviously did for the lowest performing, so the bottom 25% of students as well, which was great. I mean, high school teachers did, did great work and I think it shows in those tests. There was one question that was below state average. Again, it's a 40-question test, that's pretty good. And it wasn't very far below, but it, you know, looking at that in terms of our program of studies changes, it was an Algebra II concept on functions, but it's something that, you know, if a kid was in Algebra I freshman year and then geometry their sophomore year, they take the MCAS during their sophomore year. So, it's not really something that they may have seen. So, I, when you kind of break it down by which kids did not perform well on there, those kids were all sophomores in geometry. So, with the new program of studies, I think, you know, those questions as they come up, we should, you know, we should do well on those types of questions. And again, I do credit the geometry teachers because there were certainly a handful of standards that came up on that test that a lot of kids hadn't seen before. But in reviewing for the test, those leaks, the weeks leading into it, I think the teachers were able to do some incredible work in making sure they exposed all these standards to kids and obviously, they did pretty well, so.
And our last test is our high school science.
Yeah, this is the last year of the legacy MCAS test. We did exceptionally well this year. We do exceptionally well every year in this test. The teachers that teach biology are highly aligned and spend a lot of time... The teachers that teach biology are highly aligned and spend a lot of time reviewing their curriculum and looking at questions every year to see what questions, um, we need to, uh, spend a little bit more time on. Last year, the focus for the biology teachers was looking at open response questions, so are we looking at writing, particularly claim evidence and reasoning in writing and, uh, giving answers? And are, we did improve in our, uh, open response questions. If you look at our, our average scores for open response questions, it's thirty-three percent, uh, higher than the state average. So, they, uh, the students did very well in those open response questions. Uh, we'll see next year, um, what those changes are going to look like in the new science test. I'm very much looking forward to that.
Thank you. So, um, what we'll do is, this is a new presentation software that we use called VizMe, so we'll adjust the ELA middle school and high school bullets to reflect the information that should've been below them, and we'll post that one on the website if anyone wanted to have the accurate bullets. So, I, we apologize for that mix-up. I think all of the information got copied the same way. So, if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
One thing that comes to mind, um, just looking at the middle school information, and it's across the, across the subject areas. Um, and then looking at the middle school strategic plan, or a school improvement plan for the year, how do those, how does the information from MCAS, which you received starting in August, how's that kind of dovetailing with the strategic plan priorities for the middle school?
So, we have the preliminary MCAS data in August, and then we have the final MCAS scores in September.
Okay.
And so, I think the curriculum supervisors and I look at all of the trends that we identify ahead of time, 'cause usually the scores don't vary too much between the preliminary and the actual, um, scores. So, I think that the curriculum supervisors have a good sense of the areas that we may have seen more students struggle with, or some scores below state average when we wanna be considerably higher than state average. So, that might be how, um, we not only develop our individual teacher goals, but also our school improvement plans. So, the school improvement plans are, um, based on the district improvement, improvement plan and the strategic plan, and then a lot of the individual teacher goals in terms of student learning goals
Right.
Are using MCAS data as their focus. And then, a lot of the professional development work, especially at the department level, at the middle school and high school, um, they're working with this data all year long. So, whether or not it's a particularly identified goal in the school improvement plan, it's certainly reflected in, um, departmental work.
Okay. Great. Great. 'Cause it just, for example, the, the concern I'm hearing about math, which I know that after last year's results, the curriculum change was implemented and we're looking for results to come through, it didn't seem, it, it doesn't show up in the school improvement plan. So, I'm wondering, and what you say makes sense, that it, it just doesn't come up to the le, at the administrative level that
Right.
The school improvement plan.
It falls more into, under our curriculum review cycle
Right.
And the work that we're doing there and the recommendations that we have from that.
Okay.
And again, we know the programmatic changes to math weren't, wouldn't have a huge impact last year, although Mr. Jocelyn worked really hard with the math department to infuse a lot of the geometry concepts
Sure.
Into the curriculum, but they still had only so much time to do the set curriculum. So, in years to come, we're gonna see some great math scores.
Well, and speaking just to the amount of time that they have, uh, one of the things I didn't mention it when I was talking, but the grade six, right, we basically have like a window of April and May to do, you know, we pick the dates for the MCAS. Uh, so, grade six was the one that was always like, you know, typically the first one that we did, early May. And last year, it was moved to May twenty-first and twenty-second. It was like something, like the, some of the last possible days that you could test within the window. Um, and I just think those three weeks alone, I mean, to
Sure.
What you can cover in those three weeks and get the kids ready.
Exactly.
Even the teachers were like, you know, "We've done everything, and we reviewed everything, these kids are in good shape." Um, and, and both Sarah and Jenna Lee at the middle school have been great in being flexible. Um, and right now, the tentative schedule has, you know, everybody, either the second or third week of May.
Right.
Which compared to the first couple of days of May, I think that can make a, a pretty sizable difference.
Well, I mean, what, thirty-five weeks in a school year?
Right.
Right? So, that's eight percent of your school year.
There you go.
Three weeks, right?
It's good, man.
So.
A lot of the standards tested on MCAS are end-of-the-year standards, and we're taking the MCAS testing in April, May, and, April and May. And so, we have, we, we do the best we can to, to get the tested concepts covered, but school's important all the way until, until the last day of June, and so, um, it's a challenge to kinda get all the tested skills in there.
Exactly. Okay. Um, I, I really liked hearing that the, uh, and it was mentioned several times, that special education students scored consistently, you know, above state average, and in some cases, more above state average than general education students. So, that's, shows that we're really serving that population pretty well.
Should that information be shared with the C-PAC?
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, I think that's worth noting, 'cause that's quite, um, you know, quite an achievement, really. So, uh, great. Any other comments, questions?
I just had a couple of things come to mind. Um, so, next year, there's still opportunity, I think you were just talking about with the curriculum for math at the middle school, we're gonna have even more classes.
Yeah, it's, it's actually in effect this year.
Oh, it is? You've already changed that? Okay.
Yeah, so
For the seventh grade, I think?
Seventh, that's the one thing I didn't mention about seventh grade, is this year, seventh grade in the second semester, there's a math elements class, which is like more foundational. Um, but we have, I think, in the mid-forties, uh, numbers of kids that are signed up for that course, which is really just, and it's very individualized. Those teachers have already taken MCAS data and outside data, um, to really differentiate that experience for each kid and, and work on areas that they need to work on.
That's great.
This year's eighth graders, though, were still in that same model of having geometry in, in one semester of seventh grade. One term. So.
So, wave your magic wand and work on that.
I'll do my best.
Great. Um, and I think anecdotally, I, you know, and we've talked about this, the, the Alden and middle school MCAS scores sometimes are low, or women a lot of the pack, and then by high school, we have pretty much a hundred percent graduation. But the thing that jumps out for me, um, and other folks, I think, what I've heard, is, is the writing piece, and where we seem to struggle in Alden and middle school a little bit, and then it gets stronger in high school. Um, I assume you all, same with math. I mean, our math scores, I mean, that eighth grade, that poor eighth grade took a hit. They took it in science, math, and I don't know if it was the questions this year, or, um, I assume you all collaborate together. Like, Karen, do you see what's going on at Alden? And Brandon, do you, you know, for the math, is there talk about, is it linear? Because the spiraling is the key. Whoever brought up the spiraling, the kids can't hear at once
Yep.
That year, with science or even history, any subject, you need to hear it over and over and have it. Geography, you can't just do it in fifth grade, you need to do it all through. So, is that what, are we really working on that? You know, the purpose of having the curriculum committee that goes K to twelve Right. And then the, the subcommittee work branching off of those larger curriculum meetings, that's, you know, one of the major benefits of those district-wide committees, because we do get that vertical communication. Um, we have those opportunities there at that point. I mean, I know the kids are on different, you know, they're list, learning at different levels and what's age-appropriate and, okay. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Great. Okay. Great. Any, any more? But we're good for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Um, so, we all good?
Yep.
Okay. Um, the next item for discussion is, um, budget, uh, information and deliberations. Um, so, would you like to chime in?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, so, you just see the word hearing on, I just wanna clarify, not clarify something, just articulate something, that there's a, there's a state, there's a mass general law that requires school committees to have a, an official hearing, it needs to be advertised, and, um, it's, it's really an old, it's really an old law, and if you think about what we do to actually push out the budget information, it's not, it's intended really just to make sure that school committees talk about their budgets publicly, but we're all obligated to put an official hearing on the agenda. Um, you know, that being said, I mean, so, I think we're in sort of hearing mode, there's, there's really no new information to share, at least from my, my standpoint, since last time. We haven't had any, any, with the holiday in between, we haven't had any movement or, um, discussions really about the budget. So, it's sort of, it's status quo from where we started. I think we'll hopefully learn a lot, um, or get some movement, um, or clarifications on that, at that joint meeting on
Right.
What's that, December sixteenth?
Yeah.
But I'd be glad to answer any questions, but there's really, that we are kinda where we were, or where we have been.
Right. Right.
Just a minor logistical, for, since it is on the agenda, it's the budget hearing.
Where's your opening?
If people, for this meeting, if people come and watch the video of this meeting expecting to hear information on the budget, can we just stay on the video? What meeting was it that we really went through in detail? So, then, people watching tonight can go back and find
That's actually, that's actually a great question. November sixth was the full, the full budget presentation.
Okay, so, people who are watching tonight can go and watch November sixth?
Yep. They also can watch, um,
It's on the website.
I'm just gonna grab it. It's on our website. Um, they can also watch, we did a, we did a more condensed presentation, um, I believe November tenth, uh, at the finance committee meeting as well. That's on PAC TV. It's a great, it's a great point.
Right. Yep.
It's a great point, actually.
Well, and I would just put a plug in, there's been no changes, but obviously, with tonight's MCAS presentation, um, it was brought up a couple of times if we had more intervention at the middle school. If we could afford more intervention at the middle school, our scores might go higher.
And smaller class sizes.
And smaller class sizes.
Yeah.
And additional math support at the elementary level, because I think that all the math skills build upon each other, so the stronger the foundation in math. If we had all of our kids meter, meeting or exceeding expectations heading into middle school, um, and then continued opportunities for intervention at the middle school and high school, I think it would benefit all of our students.
So, that was a question that kinda percolated to the top of my mind, was several times it was mentioned, when the, the schedule changes next year, there'll be more opportunities for intervention. Does, is that with the staff we already have, or do we actually need to provide staff to provide the inter, interventions during, when we have more time in the schedule?
So, I think that, Miss, when Mr. Donovan prevent, presented the high school portions of the schedule, we were able to use some creative, um, changes due to enrollment to be able to support, um, at least the freshman and sophomore class with, um, the ELA and writing and math labs. Um, I think that we're able to provide some level of intervention at the middle school level without additional staffing, but certainly, down the road, I think that, um, we're, we'll definitely be in need of looking at how that intervention is going, and we'll be making recommendations after the initial year of, um, the schedule change to see if additional staffing is needed.
Right.
That's something we're working on right now, but, uh, we, we hope to at least have the time
Yep.
To be able to, um, provide that, 'cause currently, there's not even any time
Right.
In the school day, too, for, for the teachers to provide extra support to their students.
Okay.
Related to Kelly's comment, though, you know, and, and we alluded, or, um, in the presentation earlier, we talked a little bit about per pupil expenditure, and I, I, for one, think per pupil expenditure is a great, a great metric. I mean, it is what it is. Um, and if you look at the, the rankings of districts, districts that, um, spend more, uh, tend to, tend to perform, um, at higher levels, and I talk about this a lot, but, and I'm not suggesting we need to, you know, shoot for the moon necessarily with our per pupil expenditure, but if you look at districts that spend significantly higher than a Duxbury, what you, what's missing in a Duxbury are, are layers of this type of support, right? So, there, and I, I can point out some districts, but, you know, the full complement of math coaches at the elementary level, full complement of, uh, literacy coaches at the elementary level, right? Interventionists at all of them. Like, so, when you look at per pupil and you see districts that spend higher, they have those layers, you know? And I'm not suggesting we need to get there overnight, but those do separate the very good from the great. They just do. Uh, and so, I, I, I think it's important to talk, you know, kinda continue to, uh, to talk about that, because you, you do need to spend to, to create some level of support. So, anyway, just for what it's worth, I don't mean to editorialize, but I, I think it's important that we actually are missing some things that very high-achieving districts have.
Right.
Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Good. Good. Any other observations, comments? Okay, great. We have no action items for tonight. We will be, when, at what point are we going to actually need to vote on the budget?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. So, that will be two days after our joint meeting with the finance committee.
Right.
I think it's the eighteenth.
Wednesday, uh, the eighteenth.
The eighteenth. Okay.
We'll all be in a festive mood.
Bring, bring the voting.
Right. Okay. So, between now and then, if there are issues arising around the budget, we should, um, bring them to the meeting, the joint meeting, and to our meeting on the eighteenth, so that everything gets aired before we vote, I think, at that point. Okay. Uh, correspondence or other comments? Anything arising? Okay. Public comment? Shannon?
These are just really follow-up questions from what has been presented tonight. Two things. Um, first of all, to, just to go back to what you were saying, Dr. Continuity, about the layers, there are things that we're missing from the very good, between the good and the very good, right? I, for one, do not have any concept of what those things are. Um, you know, I'm completely outside of the education community. I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't know. I think that it would be really valuable at some point for the community to become aware of where those differences are. Like, what does a, what, what does Dover Sherborne do for their students that we can't or don't do in Duxbury? Um, because Duxbury is a good school, and people feel good about what their kids are learning when they come home, but to talk to us about, especially if we're talking about the need for potentially an override, which the, which the revenue projections seem to say that the, the school, nobody in town's gonna get a big bump in what they can spend over the next five years based on those projections. So, especially in an override conversation, it would be really valuable to me to understand, and I think probably a lot of people, to understand, what is the difference? What is it that we're not doing here?
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate that. I don't, I don't know if it's healthy to, to look at specific districts really, but I, I think it's good to talk about best practices, and
Well, I mean, Dover Sherborne was just an example, you know?
Yeah, no, but, yeah. But I, I mean, I think, I think we do do that, and we, maybe we can do it better, but I think we do do that in the context of the budget discussions, right? So, we've talked about elementary math coaches, a significant amount over the last three years, at least since I've been in the district. We've talked about other, um, you know, interventionists in the budget, so a lot of these unfunded needs, I think we, I think maybe what, to answer, to follow up what you just said, we need to maybe enhance
Yeah.
What we do in that conversation.
Maybe describe it as, hey, look, the really great schools
Yeah.
Offer these things.
Yeah.
And if you're looking to see what the difference is between what we can offer and what the really great schools in the state can offer, there, I have not personally ever, uh, at least understood that as a description when we're talking about those interventionists.
Yeah.
I think it's as simple, too, as we're talking about potentially cutting a teacher at the Alden School
Yeah.
And Chandler School. Um, when you're looking at schools that are looking at growth and looking at innovation, we don't wanna increase our class size.
Right.
We, we know we need, um, tech integration specials, we know we need additional math support, we know we need some flexibility in the schedule to provide intervention. So, I think we've identified in the strategic plan pretty clearly, and budget A, we, is not a growth budget. Um, we can get by with it. Budget, budget B had some opportunity for growth, but I think in the next few years,
Right.
We, we know we need tech integration specials, we know we need additional math support, we know we need some flexibility in the schedule to provide intervention, so I think we've identified in the strategic plan pretty clearly, in budget A, it's not a growth budget, we can get by with it. Budget B had some opportunity for growth, but I think in the next few years, we've identified what those areas are, and those are what top performing school districts have already.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think I agree with you, though, that the, describing the impact, describing the need is one thing, but describing the impact of filling the need is perhaps where we haven't done as much work. Because what does, what is the impact of having, say, a full complement of intervention teachers? Or what is the impact of having one or two technology coaches? What does that look like to parents and students? What does it look like to teachers? So I think that's maybe where we perhaps need to focus our attention on, on taking what we've already got, which is a pretty compelling financial plan for the district for the next three years, and turning that into a description of what the impact of having all those things will be, or the impact of not having them. You know, what does it look like when a student doesn't get intervention when they need it? What happens then? Those types of things, and it can even be anecdotal.
I was going to say, it, I hear you, it just, it's not, we don't, you know, we're not making widgets here.
Of course, I know.
And so it's, it's hard to, it's so nuanced in some cases that I'm not making an excuse, I mean, we definitely can do a better job with it, but we'll never be able to say, and I know people want this, that adding elementary math coaches will mean our MCAS scores will rise, it's just never going to happen.
But no, that's...
We're talking about individualizing instruction, differentiating instruction, personalizing learning, just, you know, I just want to finish my thought, you know, and just making sure that we actually can attend to the needs of every single student in the district. A finance person who's looking for some specific data metric is never going to get that, so it is tricky, it's nuanced. So I think we can work on that, we won't satisfy all the, you know, all the desires, you know?
I think, you're right, and it's not only, it's not necessarily data metrics that we want, it's more a description of what the school environment looks like, what the student experience looks like and feels like.
Yeah.
That has more, to me, has more impact to parents and community members than saying, you know, our MCAS scores will go up X percent, or, because as you say, it's not credible to make that kind of claim, but it is credible to say that students, students who are struggling and then receive intervention, in our experience, they tend to perform better, or whatever, you know?
Sorry, Shannon.
No, no, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I was getting excited. I see it as a narrative of best practices that you actually want to kind of peel away from the budget, right? It's just kind of another, another angle of explaining to parents in the community the impact of the school services, right? Because we have pieces, like you threw in a couple of things, we've heard some things tonight, you know, about class sizes and what best, you know, what other communities have, and I think it's just pulling in to a separate, like appendix A to the budget of best practices, and, you know, and here's what's out there, and here's what we don't have. So people have just the context, but not putting it within actual budget framework of that, because I think that relieves some of your concerns, Dr. Antinuti, about the financial perspective of it versus just what are best practices, and what are we missing for our kids?
Right.
And you pull it from those school, the improvement plans and the strategy, our unmet needs, and then what other schools are doing. I just think it's a different way, framing.
Yeah, I think it's, it's similar to what I was trying to say a couple of weeks ago, but not doing a very artful job at it. Like, you know, I don't think you give yourself enough credit, like, because there are certain, like, there are times, like, five minutes ago, where you just made a statement about layering in intervention and the benefit and the advantages of layering in intervention as it relates to a more holistic way of getting better academically over time. You don't really see that in the budget. It's hard to see that in the budget. You know, like, I think sometimes we're cursed with knowledge, or I should say, you guys are cursed with knowledge, because you're so good at education. It comes so close to you. It comes so easily to you that it's difficult for people like me, it looks reasonable in the budget, and I believe that these things should be in the budget, but if I put myself in the place of someone who's not in these meetings all the time, it would be reasonable, I think, to assume that some people could just say, geez, like, the classes are crowded, I know I've heard that, and now I'm looking in the budget, and it looks like they're, they're looking for more coaches, so how do those two things square? Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, that's not like a perfect example, but it's more of like, I think you got it right. Sometimes it's like, it's like separating some of the stuff out from the budget, and just making a clear, just sort of statement around, like, here's why, for example, here's why layering coaches and interventions are, is a really, really good practice at the lower grades.
And I think we talk about the slow erosion of services when you have a two and a quarter percent budget year after year. That's exactly what we're talking about, is not being able to provide additional support and interventions within our budgets, and so you're starting to see the class size creep up. When we talk about potentially cutting a teacher at the elementary level, we don't want to do that, yet we're forced to. Talking about potentially eliminating a teaching assistant or two district-wide, that's going to increase the small group support size. So all of those, all of those things that we're talking about as our reality have an impact on students. And so we've been faced in the past few years with making decisions that are the least impact, but they are still having an impact. And so I think with the budget process, we try to lay that out.
Yeah.
But also, we have to have that balance of, we're still expected to be amazing every single day, and we have people that work so hard at the school level to make sure that the students are getting what they need. So you also have to balance coming to these meetings and being negative, and also celebrating the hard work that everyone is doing. So it's, it's really tricky to be able to say, if only we had this, because I think that narrative gets old for a lot of people, too. I think that we're fortunate to have a lot of good resources here, and so...
I'd also say, too, the budget, and I know, Shannon, something you said is ringing in my mind, I'm going to use a word I know I shouldn't use, but budgeting is not our only marketing tool, you know, in this, in the thing. I think we get so hyper-focused sometimes on the budget, trying to be everything to everybody. The amount of communication about what happens in our schools that goes out on a daily basis in this district is ridiculous. Okay? It really is. And so like, I, I just, I'm getting sort of concerned that we're so hyper-focused on trying to have the budget be the end-all, be-all for educating the entire community on everything that they might ask, or have asked, or might not even know they should ask, right? And, you know, and I just think we need to bear that in mind, because I actually think, I don't want to start this narrative that we don't communicate well, I will tell you that what we do is fairly unique for school districts. And I'm talking newsletters, social media, our budget materials, all that, like, we're trying to find a silver bullet for education, and the budget's not, not that silver bullet.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So I just, I, I don't want to pat ourselves on the back, and I don't want to overly criticize, right? But we do a pretty good job, I think, of both celebrating and educating, but the budget can't be the sole focus of that. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. I agree.
We need a philosophical blog. We need a philosophical blog. Like, for people who aren't from, no, like, my background is education, right? So I get it, I get the smaller class size. Three or four more kids in a class has a huge impact, I understand that. Duxbury teachers not on the highest end of the pay scale, they love to be here, they do amazing, incredible things. The middle school, like, those, like, you can't, anyways, I think that for someone like me, like, I can roll in all that philosophy in the budget, and that's why I get frustrated, and that's why I say I'm never excited about losing a teacher, because there's such a snowball effect, and, you know, you can't, a couple more kids in math class, we had the issues last year, look at the eighth grade math scores. I mean, it's, to me, it's obvious, but it might not be to a lot of people, I'm not being very articulate, but I think we all know the narrative, because we're in these meetings and we're hearing it all the time, people come in and out, they don't have that, you know, background. Right. And, and I think that's what we're missing, I think, just, 100% of the district is really good at communication now, I think you guys have done a great job. I think circling back to Shannon's original point, is if we are thinking that down the road sometime, whether it's near or long-term, that we're going to be asking the community for more money, that's where we need to really pull all of this together so that they can understand why we need more money. We've been talking about this, but I think it's just another way of pulling it together from a different angle.
Yeah, I agree.
So maybe we, as a school committee, need to articulate some educational...
We should do an outline on this of what we think needs to be covered. We've touched on like 20 points in the last 10 minutes that need to be expanded on.
I also think that for, for many parents, their experience is whatever school district they're in, right?
Right.
So, so we're somewhat dependent on professionals to tell us what, what other districts do, because we don't necessarily shop around. We come to Duxbury and we stay here, right? And so, and Duxbury does deliver a really high-quality education. So I think that there may be parents who don't know what we're missing, whereas you, on the professional side, know what other school districts are doing, what kind of leading-edge strategies and approaches are being used to good effect elsewhere in Massachusetts. And that's the kind of information that, you know, we do hear in school committee, and, you know, the more we hear it, the more context it helps, it gives us to understand how Duxbury fits into a bigger picture. And I think ultimately, that's where, where we're going to have to make the argument for, for whatever strategy we have, depending on what the budget environment is. If we're going to go for an override, why are we asking for these particular priorities? If we're not having an override, what are we cutting, and how do we know which things are going to have the least bad impact, least worst impact? So, and that's the kind of contextual information that most parents don't have, that our administrators can give us. So, you know, that will, that will help us to, to make the argument, and, and also to kind of take it away from putting a value, a financial value, or a statistical test score value, and more on a kind of learning impact.
Learning impact, I like that. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I had one other thing.
You're gone on.
This one I don't think will be...
Did I miss a meeting? I didn't come to all the meetings last year, so did I miss a meeting where there was broad conversation about, or any conversation about what this schedule change is going to look like? I, because it's mentioned in almost every school committee meeting, and certainly was mentioned here, and my kids are coming home, giving me snippets of things, and I don't know whether they're making things up, or whether...
It was not, it was not, it was an administrative, it was not discussed here, it was, no.
There has been no schedule change. There has been no schedule change yet.
No, I know, I know, but the kids are talking about it amongst themselves.
I think it was mentioned that...
In the budget, or the contract negotiations.
We can talk about it at some point in the future, yeah.
It would be great.
Just that there will be a schedule change.
It's pretty simple, yeah. It's pretty simple, yeah. But you didn't miss, you didn't miss anything.
Okay.
But we can drink.
Because I keep, my kids are coming home telling me crazy stories about how the schedule's going to work, and I'm like, I don't know, I don't know. They're like, you go to all those meetings, you don't know. No, I don't. So if there's...
No, but they will get some intervention with it.
When do you think you'll be ready to present to the community what that's going to look like? I mean, will it be, are you going to be working on it all the way to the end of the school year, or do you think?
Yeah, I mean, we're concerned, I don't know, I have to think about how best to present it.
Okay. I didn't know, like, if it's...
It's still a work in progress.
Yeah.
And I think it's a conversation that's taking place throughout this school year, and it will be an opportunity, we hope, for intervention. It may not be intervention for every single student, because every single student doesn't require intervention every time we have a block. But we'll certainly be able to, before the end of the school year, share some details about that that we don't currently have right now.
Okay.